Okay, at 6:30, we are going to get started. Our board meeting of Tuesday, January 20th, 2015. And Clerk Lefler Kemp, would you please call roll, please?
Yes, thank you.
Whoops, wait, wait, wait. Where is the thing?
Just one on the left.
Next. Thank you. Member Harla.
Here.
Member Johnston.
Here.
Myself. Member Murnekey.
Here.
Member Salya Punko.
Here.
Member Welty.
Here.
Member Westholm.
Here.
Superintendent Bill Grandseth.
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Eddie Crawford.
Here.
Deputy Clerk Bill Hanson.
Here.
Secretary Melinda Tebow.
Here.
Sue Tellerico.
Here.
Student Representatives Jude Guessens.
Here.
And Tommy Olafson. Thank you.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. Thank you, Clerk Lefler Kemp. We will now stand up and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'm just going to thank my fellow board members for supporting me as your chair for this year. And I just want to make sure that we have a good start to the year and we show civility towards each other and to focus on educating our students and being a good example as leaders in our community. And I would like Clerk Lefler Kemp to read the school district mission statement, please.
The purpose of Independent School District 709 is to provide a quality education that prepares all students for successful lives as global citizens in the home, community, and workplace. And the vision that goes along with that is that we will build on our shared beliefs and values of unity, high achievement, and responsible use of resources to create Duluth Public Schools and classrooms that are safe, supportive, and inclusive. We will work to inspire every student to achieve their potential and prepare students to lead productive, fulfilling lives as citizens of Duluth and the wider world.
Thank you, Member Lefler Kemp. I appreciate that. And remember that our focus is on students. And with that, we have two new student board members, so we would love to meet you. I would like to start, first of all, Jude Guessens from Duluth East. And Jude, if you could, if you'd just hit your button, I would like to just give a quick thing, what you're involved in at school and what you're excited about this. Oopsie, I forget about this. What you're excited about with starting on the board for this year.
Well, yeah, my name is Jude Guessens. I'm a junior at Duluth East High School. I'm involved in things like speech and debate and youth and government, Students for the Future. And I guess I'm just really, I think this is a tremendous honor to represent my peers at East. They selected me. And I think it's, I'm just really excited to get to know you all more and to kind of just be able to serve my students, my peers, and to learn a lot, so, thank you.
Great, thank you. We appreciate you being here and we look forward to having you here this year. And I would like Tommy Olafson from Denfeld to please say something, Tommy. It's on, oh, it's on. Whoops. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Tommy Olafson. A few things I'm involved at through school and otherwise. I'm in soccer, Alpine skiing, the Boy Scouts of America. I'm very honored to be here as your Denfeld School Board Representative. Like Jude said, I'm very honored to represent my peers and to connect the school board to the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. We look forward to having you here, too. It helps to have students here because it reminds us what we're here for and we love having your input, so, welcome. We're really glad you're here. All right, board members, we're going to go on to approval of the agenda. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion approved.
Okay, that's motion by Member Murnekey. Is there a second? Seconded by Member Harla. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. And can we move on to the reading and approval of the minutes? We have the special school board meeting of December 16th. Is there a motion to approve that, the minute? Okay, it's been moved by Member Murnekey. Is there a second? Seconded by Member Welty. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries unanimously. Go to the next page, board members. The minutes of the regular school board meeting of Tuesday, December 16th. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved by Member Westholm.
Seconded.
Seconded by Member Murnekey. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries unanimously also. And then go to the next one, which is a couple of pages. Let's see, which page is that? The special school board meeting of December 22nd. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
That's been moved by Member Murnekey. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Member Westholm. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That also carries unanimously. And the last, the annual organizational meeting, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
That's been moved by Member Harla. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay. I'll second by Member Lefler Kemp. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the organizational meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries unanimously also. That was nice and easy, board members, thank you. And the next thing on our agenda is the school and community recognition. And I know we're going to be recognizing some very special students, so if we just go down there?
Members of the board, this month, I'm pleased to present Devon Johnston and Jackson Churchill from Duluth East High School for recognition. Devon and Jackson recently competed in the Physics Olympiad held at the University of Minnesota Duluth. Physics Olympiads are competitions for high school students and involve solving theoretical and experimental problems. The mission of the event is to promote and demonstrate academic excellence and to provide intellectual stimulation for students interested in physical sciences. They are held regularly in many countries and are conducted at the city, regional, state, country, and international levels. Nearly 20 students competed in the Duluth event. Devon earned first place in the event and Jackson took third place. Really outstanding results, congratulations.
All right. It's really fun to see student success at this, so we really appreciate everything that our students do to win awards, too, so it's fun to recognize this part of our board meeting. All right, we now have audience participation. And I just have to remind the audience of keeping civility. And in our board meeting, we want to make sure that we respect people and not attack anyone. So our first speaker is Tim Davis. Let's see, can I go, is this it?
Hello.
Can I just say something? I forgot, you have three minutes. And Member Lefler Kemp will be timing you, so I'm sorry. Thank you. My first time here, so, thanks.
Mine's as well. Hello to the board, hello to the members of the audience. I have a few questions. What will the school board do in terms of holding the district more accountable for bettering kids of color graduation? So what will you do to the achievement gap, is what I'm referring to? My other question is, why has the, why has not the school board spent more money on diversifying its operations in all school in District Y? And that's it.
Thank you. Next speaker is Gordon Downs.
My name is Gordon Downs. It's been a while since I've been here speaking. I was here quite a few times when you were claiming the red plan down our throats. She mentions civility and everything, which is very nice, except I really disagree with the way you're treating a couple of the board members, Art Johnston and Henry Welty. Just because they're on the opposite ends of what you're trying to push through, they're trying to tell the public the problems the school board is having, finances, building new buildings instead of fixing up the old ones, too many students in classrooms, and a few other items. And the worst civil thing I've ever seen in my life was last year, so when Lauren Carl was up here talking to the school board some about the red plan, speaking against it, and the school board says, "Well, we're not going to put up this crap," so they shut his mic off. So there he stands with the mic shut off. He tried to continue his train of thought, and they weren't going to go for that crap, so there was a police officer here, they summoned him over, they grabbed the hold of Mr. Martell and dragged him out in the hall. Now, that really is civil. And if I was one of the newspapers here at the time, I would have put that right on the page of the news Tribune, "This is how your school board operates." And that's why people don't like to come up here and speak, because that's the way they're treated. And plus, a lot of people, including me, aren't comfortable speaking in public, but we've got to get out here once in a while. And I can understand how the voters in Duluth, 500 or 1,000, whoever votes for members on the school board, can vote for a school board member and put them on the board representing their districts. And then there's four or five school board members that dislike the way they're speaking, and they're going to throw them off the school board. So how can four or five people get rid of school board members when a thousand voters put them on the school board? It just baffles my mind. And I hope that when this gets down to the cities and the judge listens to this, you'll have a little common sense that they're put there from the general vote of the public. And just because they don't, four or five disgruntled school board members can run them off the board, and that's, if you want to call that civil, go ahead and call it being civil. I won't see what I think about it, because I don't like to swear in public.
Our next speaker is Paul Manning. Our former school board rep from East.
Hello, school board. I'd just like to thank you for my time on the board. It was an interesting experience, learning about all this school board stuff, being governed and all that. I went to the state school board convention this past week, and that was a very enlightening experience, all the issues you have to deal with, all the problems with state funding especially that you have to deal with on a day-to-day basis, so thanks for serving. And just about, you know, whatever everyone else is talking about, I just want to say an apology can go a long way for a lot of things, so, that's a lot to say. But I wanted to come here mostly to talk about just an issue that I see as a major problem with all the issues you have to face. I just want you to have in mind the ideas of rates of depression and anxiety among young people in the schools. Looking at a lot of studies, especially one done by the University of San Diego a couple years ago, 2010, it finds that the rates among, of depression and anxiety among young people have been increasing steadily over the past 50 to 70 years. Today, five to eight as many times, times as many, high school and college students meet the criteria for diagnosis of major depression and/or an anxiety disorder, as was true a half a century or more ago. This increased rate is not the result of changed diagnosis criteria, it holds true even when these measures are steady. If progress is measured in the mental health and happiness of young people, then we've been going backwards for some time in America here. And with schools being one of the largest ways that we socialize our kids, really maybe having the idea of what we can do to improve these terrible rates of anxiety and depression in our young people is a major priority. When you look at solutions, they shouldn't just be Band-Aids to the things that you see, it should be more going at the source and what you can do. And the biggest thing that it finds, the study, was that what determines whether you're going to be depressed or anxiety in your life is whether you feel like you can change the world, with your inner locus of control, they called it. And more and more people and students are being trained that they don't have that, that they should focus more on goals they can't necessarily attain, like wealth, and not on happiness and well-being. So if some way you can dedicate resources with more resources than you have now to maybe training teachers to put more of an emphasis on play and less on getting children to have so much pressure put on them by tests and other systems, I think you could really make schools a little happier and improve a lot of outcomes, including job prospects, by doing that as well. So just keep that in mind as you go through this year, but overall, past year, with your great efforts on language immersion programs, which I'm really proud of, I just want to thank you for keeping that focus on education throughout these past years and hopefully putting more of an emphasis on it in the years to come. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Paul. And it was nice to have you down at the school board conference. It was great. Next speaker, Lauren Martell.
Good evening. I have some concerns about the additional red plan spending outlined in the business committee meeting last week. First of all, it seems like we're spending a fair amount of money fixing mistakes like window shades that were apparently not dark enough in a parking lot that needs to be reconfigured. Clerk Lefler Kemp, as usual, went on about how wonderful everything was. Here is a fact about the tech facility she referred to. We had brand-new tech facilities, not even fully paid for yet. We let the lower campus tech building slip away free in the central property sale, and we are pouring millions more into facilities everybody knows will never be as good as we had. It also sounds fishy to have to go back in and complete finishing work that was left undone supposedly to be sure we had enough money. While that work was going to be done at some point, and I don't understand how we weren't going to have to come up with the money eventually, one way or another. Further, it was disheartening to hear that about a third of the money, 1.9 million, is going to come from general fund COP savings. Are you claiming that you have 1.9 million of savings you haven't used yet? Or are you claiming that you have extra savings now, beyond the annual debt obligation of the lease purchase COPs? It sounds like more money is just going to be robbed from the general fund. Pulling money out of operations is the main reason for the district's fiscal problems. The district's fiscal trouble is the underlying reason for another 100-student enrollment plummet last month. The red plan's half-billion-dollar total bill has predictably left the public schools uncompetitive in the marketplace. Edison will build a high school before lawn, and enrollment will take another significant hit, likely dropping below 8,000. It was 10,893 when Dixon stepped into town. The five people controlling this board, of course, believe that drop is all due to a shrinking population. They believe everything without question. The five of them want nothing but excuses and happy talk. And of course, they've just elected the very best possible person as board chair to lead them down that path. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker is Rich Paulson.
Good evening, board members. I'm here again tonight to talk and ask you about, please arrange for a state audit. I spoke a year ago, and of course, nothing has happened since then. Your policy, 3215, which I have given, shared with everybody here, states that every five years, the school board will arrange with the state or Minnesota auditor to conduct a financial audit of the school district. That hasn't happened. The last state audit was in 1994, so I think you're a little behind covering this policy. The time surely has come to follow the policy and have a state audit. Maybe for some reason or another, you're not able to, it's too late this year for fiscal 15, but surely it can't be too late for fiscal 16. And it's very, very important to get another set of eyes to look at the financial affairs of the school district. It's in black and white here, just do it. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other? Member Johnson, is there anyone else that has signed up to speak? Let me check, please. Okay, and the last speaker is Marcia Stromgren.
Good evening, board members, public. My name is Marcy Stromgren, business owner and constant vigil of this administration and school board. I, first of all, want to thank Lauren Martell for doing phenomenal job of actually writing articles that make a lot of sense. They're in the Reader on a weekly basis, and if you don't pick it up and find out what's really going down with your money, you ought to try it. He is an excellent writer, and I want to commend him for the job he's doing. He helps me see some of the financial picture that I don't do too well in. Fortunately, my husband takes care of that part in our business. However, I also want to thank Art Johnston, who has for six years not been appointed to one committee, six years. And he should never get upset, he should just be status quo, la-la, and never go for and do anything at just the status quo. No, I thank you, Art, for the fact that you stand up for us, not even in your district. The people that elected you are very fortunate that they have somebody that actually goes out there and represents them. And I also want to say that I did a little bit of research on the numbers, how much we're losing because of this red plan and the continued outgoing of money. About 1,700 students, $12,000 apiece, it's about 3.4 million, the way I figure it. Why is there such a discrepancy between the number of people that are enrolled at Denfeld? A school that was half the size when I went there has 989 students. We had 1,500, and we never sat on the floor, on a ledge, or anything else, we all had desks. But we have 989 students out there. It's not because the population is lower out there. Those kids have the advantage to go to Rancho, Proctor, and Hometown, and they're going there, besides the, all of the alternative education. But there's 1,600 out at East? Hmm. I don't, I don't see this as very good management of what's going down, and then those kids out at Denfeld don't get the same advantages as they do out in the eastern section of the city. So you know what? I'm a mad, angry taxpayer, just like Chuck Frederick labeled me a few years ago, and I'll continue to be that way because I keep seeing the disparity of the people of color getting not as good of an education as some of the other people do. I know there's a lot involved in that, but nonetheless, I don't see this school district educating for my dollar, and I'm really tired of paying you more taxes every year. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to school and community recognition. I'm sorry, we already did that. Reading communications, I saw the communications, sorry. Thank you. Let's see. Mr. Grandseth? There you are.
And there are no official communications to be reported this month, so we will go right into the superintendent's report. Well, today is, and I'm sure Jude and Tommy can tell you, that today was the first day of second semester. And in many ways, it's like the first day of school. Many of our students have new schedules, new teachers, new kids in their class, and it's really a chance to have a fresh start with a clean slate. And so I encourage all of our students to, to set high goals for themselves and realistic, wherever Paul went, I wanted to add that in there, and to work towards those goals this year and to, to help each other and support each other in achieving each other's goals. And on the same vein, it's new starts, it's about time to start registering for next year already. Students have received their registration materials at school but haven't started registering yet, or if they haven't received them, they will be soon. I know they're in the process of handing those out. So there will be opportunities for kids to register online, and it's a little bit different at each of the schools, the process that they go through, but they're both online. So please take the opportunity to talk to your students about what classes they plan to take, what is their four-year graduation plan, which classes really meet their needs and are an interest that they would enjoy learning more about. And with our new board members, thank you for introducing them, Jude Guessens once again, and Tommy Olafson from Denfeld. I'm hoping that this year, we're going to add a little something new as part of our superintendent's report. We won't do it this month and put them on the spot, but starting next month, we'll have a quick report from each of our students about the activities at their schools, so maybe a big game that's coming up, or a dance, or a club that's doing something that the community can be involved in, and then a report about some academic activity that's going on in their school in one of their classes, just as a way to really bring out what's going on in our schools and have them be more involved in, in our meetings and bringing us some information on that. So, again, welcome. I'm, I think this is going to be a great opportunity for you, and I'm looking forward to future reports.
Thank you, superintendent, and I want to echo that, too, because it is nice to hear what's happening in our schools, even if I am involved because I still have someone there, it's, it's good to hear all across the city, so, thank you. All right, we are now going to go into the report of the standing committees, and we're going to start out with the education committee report by Member Harla. So, there you go.
Great, thank you very much, Chair, and looking forward to being able to serve the education committee again this year. We had a lot of good discussion at this month's education committee, beginning with a presentation that we had from Dr. Carey, our director of curricul- that we had from Dr. Carey, our director of curriculum and instruction, on the 2015-2016 student registration process and that timeline that's associated with student registration. I, as, thinking back from when I was registering for classes in high school, we, they're talking about it much sooner than when I, when I did not many years ago, so really got, there's a long plan that we have in the district and the, our administration, and teachers have been working for many months on, on leading up to this. And so just as the superintendent said, that families have received information about registering for their classes, and there's a, you know, a really good timeline that's available for parents, and I, again, would just, we were just encouraged to be encouraging people to talk with our students about the variety, the wide variety of class offerings that are available for students. The next piece that we had was a presentation on our alcohol, tobacco, and other drug committee that's going to be beginning. Ron Lake presented to our committee just on, on an issue that's really important for us to discuss as a broad community and as we collectively impact use of alcohol, tobacco, and other drug. It's important that, as schools, we begin this discussion and, or continue this discussion. Interesting enough, we, you know, had conversations both about prevention and about intervention. I know about a year ago at this time, we were talking a lot about the potential of drug testing. I, as a board member, wasn't as much for that because we need to do a lot more before we head into doing that. I know many, many board members had a lot of say with, when it, when it came to drug testing, but this is actually a more comprehensive view and, and approach to it. He did a presentation to just talk a little bit about a process that we're going to be going into, to work with the community and find out what we have within our schools and, and community to support students as more of a joint task force. We also heard a lot about the connection between out-of-school suspensions from our principal, Tanya Skoniers from Denfeld, and just saw a lot of the correlation between the two. So I thought it was a really important and pertinent discussion for us to have. As a community, I'm sure that there will be some more discussion from other board members, and so want to leave that open to folks. But I'm glad to know that this is an area that we're moving forward to address alcohol, tobacco, and other drug use in our students so that we can continue seeing them moving forward to success. With regard to action items, Chair, would you like me to read, like them to go individually or just, can I move the whole report?
We have the resolution.
We do have, okay, so I'll read the A and B and then read the resolution. So the first, there were no, there, there was an extended field trip request from FFA students going to the University of Minnesota Minneapolis and St. Paul campuses. So it was recommended that Duluth School Board accept and approve the above extended field trip request. And then we do have a resolution on page 21. And this is resolution number E-1-15-3231, acceptance of grant awards to Duluth Public Schools, whereas Minnesota statute 465.03 requires a school district to accept grants by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by donor in full, and whereas acceptance of the grant in accordance with the donor's terms is in best interest of the Duluth Public Schools. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept the below-described grant funds from said organizations in accordance with the terms set forth herein, be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to these organizations. So I move and the organizations we've received funding from our Second Harvest Northland with, to support the breakfast program at Lowell Elementary, and Rotary Club 25 for the Stop Market Game Grant. And so I move this resolution.
Thank you, Member Harla. Of motion and Member Murdekees?
Walty.
Oh, Walty. Oh, get your hand up. Okay. So that's the second. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor of resolution 115-3231, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. And Member Harla, you can just finish the report.
For diploma requests, we have the following students have completed all high school graduation requirements and should be awarded a diploma. So Chimmy Van Nuijin, Tyrone Lorenz Long, Christian Allen Nielsen, Jonathan Taylor Schinkel, Eliamore Richard Jalkowski, Tristan Eli Larson, Keenan Allen McGovern, Jason Michael Browell, Levi John Lind, and Dakota James Hatfield. And it is recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve the above diploma requests. And then a few of the future items that are, were added to this were community education presentation, different protocol, gun safety, school cafeterias, parking lots, musical instruments, and rental dollars, kind of talking about some career centers, civic engagement, career and technical education programs, specialist overview, and middle school programming. So Chair, that is the education report, and I move it.
Thank you, Member Harla. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Westholm. Is there any discussion? Member Wel, let's see. Member Walty.
Yes, I'd like to withhold item 1A2.
1A2. That's it. Okay, Member Walty, go ahead, and what is your question on that?
The alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs committee is relative new feature to the district, and it certainly springs from a concern we have about the young people that we have that are consuming these, these products. And it was a very good discussion, and I, I felt like I learned a great deal about how we plan on dealing with them. But my, what I really have to do is just make a comment on this subject. And, and I think what, what helped it spring to my mind was our, our former student representative, Paul Manning, who spoke quite eloquently about the difficulties young people have with depression and anxiety. And, and he said something I thought was very wise, and I really enjoyed hearing Paul say this, because Paul, I think embodies what he was suggesting to us, and that was that if we want children to be able to be able to shrug off the depression and, and anxiety, we need to prepare them for life, not necessarily making a lot of money, but, but having a, the purpose of, of making the world a better place, give them a sense that they have, have some way of, of changing the world to the better. And I would just make this observation, that the heavy consumption of these, these particular substances, alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs are frequently a replacement for kids who often feel that that's what they're here on earth to do, enjoy themselves for the short time, not thinking about the, the future, et cetera. So I guess what I'm going to ask that the people who are a part of this and who will be supervising it and getting reports from the, this, this group of people, keep in mind is that perhaps we, as a district, need to think about how we can tap into those things that Paul Manning was suggesting to us and, and, and help try to make our schools a, a system, an organization, a culture, a society that does its best to give those kids that sense of, of being able to change the world. And that's a very tall order, and there's no one right path to it, but this is going to be a short meeting, and I think that these are very important thoughts for us to, to, to be thinking about. That's all I had to say. Chair, salut.
Thank you, Member Walty. Is there anything else? Seeing none, let's vote on the rest of the education committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. We're going to go next to the HR report, and that is Member Murdeke. Let's see.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Human Resources Committee met on Tuesday. Staffing actions are as follows: certified leaves, two, certified long-term sub, two, certified retirement, one, non-certified appointments, three, non-certified demotions, one, non-certified leaves, two, non-certified long-term sub, two, non-certified permanent decrease, one, non-certified promotion, one, non-certified resignation, three, non-certified retirement, one, non-certified temporary decrease, one, non-certified termination, one, non-certified temporary increase. Don't have a number on that. Three, oh, yes, okay, 22. And then that is the staffing report. Other action items, we are asked to approve the paraprofessionals collective bargaining agreement, and I would like to read that resolution and have a vote on it now, if that's permissible. Okay, resolution, paraprofessionals, resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, that the collective bargaining agreement between Independent School District 709 and the paraprofessionals, a summary of which is in the hands of all school board members, be approved and adopted for the period July 1st, 2013 to June 30th, 2016 inclusive, and that the chairperson and the clerk of the school board be hereby authorized to execute said agreement on behalf of the school district. I move resolution HR 115-3230.
Dated January 20th, 2015. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Lefler Kemp. Is there any discussion? Member Walty.
Yes, I apologize, it was Member Johnston who got the, the text of the contract with its changes to me. I was out of town, coming home from a, a short sojourn away from Duluth on Monday, and was in the plane and didn't get a chance to read through this. Having just, just gotten it, I would be curious to ask a couple of questions about some of the, the verbiage changes, because they seem to be fairly significant. We struck a lot of words and we added a few of them. I'm not sure if there was much of a discussion about this at the HR committee meeting, but perhaps I can just very quickly have Mr. Sworoski give me a quick rundown on, on the verbiage I have not had a chance to, to look at. Could you just kind of go through here and, and give me a thumbnail of what some of the major changes are in the, in the, in the verbiage, Mr. Sworoski?
Well, again, these were negotiated. A copy of these changes contract was emailed out to the entire board also, so I, we did hand a hard copy out at the committee meeting. Essentially, starting with Article 7, some of, some of it is just date changes, but with Article 7, we're talking about, right now, we can change, we can increase or decrease the number of hours for a paraprofessional by five hours, and that was agreed to move that up to 10, because if you ever went beyond five hours, then you basically had to repost the position. So this would allow people to stay who are doing a, a good job in their position at a higher number of hours without having to repost the positions. We added the option, essentially, it was always the most senior person would get the position. And occasionally, with the paraprofessionals, there are some positions that are just not cut out for everybody, so this allows the district four options within the course of the year to select less than the most senior position for that position. Postings, we were restricted by having them go up on Fridays and come down the following Friday, so a position that came available on Monday would have to go almost two weeks, so we just changed the language, so it would only run five days, which is, we feel, the ideal, and I, the unit also does. Let's see. Again, displacements and layoffs that would reduce their, their, their number of hours to below the benefit level. There were some language that was put into their, we would follow, again, there was an order and manner that we would follow those displacements with in, in order for them to bump. Leaves, the state has implemented a new standard. The minimum number of days for family leave is now 20, and we updated the language to reflect that and who would, who it applied to. And that you'll see in all the new contracts that we're negotiating. School closing days, first day, no deductions from the employee sick bank. And what we did is, essentially here, they were, they were granted a snow day where they didn't have one before, but the program, the, the paraprofessionals had what we called makeup time, and it was two days that they could work extra to make up days. And in most cases, that time is time that's assigned to them. For instance, if a student was, needed assistance to the bus and the bus was late and we needed the parer to stay another 15 minutes or so, you know, of course, they would get paid, but they'd also apply that to the, the two-day makeup. It, it got to the point where it really didn't make any sense, so there was kind of a swap of value there. Let's see, the two-hour late start, and again, and the two-hour late start, just like on a, a regular snow day, they are allowed to use their sick time for a two-hour late start to make up or, or to take it without pay. Healthcare savings, a plan, this is the new plan that most of the units have gone to. This allows your money to go down to the state. There's some more flexibility to it. It, you are allowed to invest it within certain parameters, and so that's the new language On the Article 7 reclassifications, it was more of a clarification, if a person's reclassed, how they would drop from one column to another. I think in the past, it was you would go to that next one, to the next highest above where you were currently at. In a, in certain situations for reclassifications, now they will drop straight down into that That is pretty much the gist.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sworoski. Oh, hold on a sec. Yes, Member Walty.
I, I would just like to thank Mr. Sworoski for being marvelously succinct. Thank you.
Okay, and I have, let's see, Member Murdeke, you are next.
Well, I was going to continue, but I, well, no, but again, thank you. You emailed this to us last Thursday, I think, wasn't it? I appreciate you doing that. It helps us in advance get some idea of, of what was in the contract. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, Member Johnston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple issues, I don't have any real objection to any of these changes, but I do have a concern about the process that was done. We've had closed sessions talking about criteria and parameters that, that we as a board put forth, and some of these, some of them may be insignificant, but yet some of the things I think, as a minimum, should have been talked to about the board before we got a copy of this. For example, snow days, makeup days, seniority issues, all benefit levels, when that enters in reclassifications. Those are significant, and I certainly would have preferred to have the negotiating committee, whatever that is, talk to the board before these, this quite extensive verbiage changes was done for them. Having said that, you know, again, I will not be able to vote for this because my spouse is, is in this bargaining unit, so I will not be voting for that. But I would certainly hope that in the future, when we have significant verbiage changes, that those are discussed with the board ahead of time.
Member Walty?
Yes, I, I do think that a closed session on some of these important verbiage changes to the contracts, which may or may not have some significant financial ramifications, are worthwhile. And I guess I must confess that when Member Johnston mentioned the negotiations committee, I, that's a rather sore point with me, since we are all, according to policy, members of the negotiating committee, and that didn't work out for me, for me so very well last March, when I, I hoped to take advantage of that position, which was denied me at that time. So just a complaint, free to note, maybe we can do better in the future.
Member Murdeke.
Thank you. Move on to 2B.
Oh, wait.
Oh, the resolution, we're voting on the resolution.
We need to vote on the resolution, yeah.
Forgot, we didn't do that.
Okay, so we're going to do that right now. All those in favor of resolution HR 115-3230, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries.
Six.
Six, and you abstaining? Okay, so it carries 6-0, and then one abstention. All right, Member Murdeke, go ahead.
Thank you. You'd think I would have known that. I know. We also had a report by Mr. Leiter on job descriptions, and those are attached. We have four job descriptions in our maintenance group, the school custodian, two, engineer, three. three, engineer, four, school equipment maintenance manager, and Mr. Leiter was kind enough to go through the changes on that. There are no HR informational items at this time. There are no HR future items at this time. So, I move the HR Human Resources Committee report.
Is there a second? Okay, Member Harala, seconded. Can I ask you, Mr. Sworoski, can we just move all that together, including the job descriptions, or do we have to have it separate? We can just do the whole... Oh, sorry.
Just fine unless somebody wants to withhold something too.
Okay. So, let's move it all together. I'll say we'll just have it all together, and we have it moved and seconded. And there is a question. Member Johnston?
I'll just withhold 2B.
Oh, you're withholding 2B, the job descriptions. Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I did get an email from Mr. Leiter, thank you. And one of the things we did, talked very briefly about this in the committee, was the numbers of people that we had in these type of positions, engineers, custodial and whatnot. And Mr. Leiter did, was nice enough to say that he hadn't got that together yet. But again, I would, something that, if somebody asked on the committee, and we would like to get that information eventually. So, I will be waiting for this, and I certainly have no objection to the reclassification, but I would like to have a little bit of background, like at least the numbers, if you could, in the future.
Okay, we're ready to vote on the HR report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry, that carries unanimously. And board members will move on to the Business Committee report. Member Westholm.
Yes, thank you. Before we get into the meat of our board report, Mr. Hanson has pointed out that there's one issue that we should deal with before we even start, and that's if you look on, it's 5D, and 5D is Resolution B-1-15-3235, and it's relating to $4.4 million taxable general obligation bond and anticipation certificates of indebtedness and so on and so forth. And that's something that I don't really know that well or understand that well. So, we'll rely on Mr. Hanson. And also, there's somebody from the community who, I guess, can talk about that, too.
Okay, Mr. Hanson, go ahead.
Board members, you may want to move the... First of all, thank you for your flexibility in allowing this item to go first. Steve Pumper is here from PMA Financial tonight to tell us about the bond sale today. But before I say anything more, probably more appropriate to move the resolution and second it, and then we can begin our discussion at that point.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Okay. Member Westholm, go ahead and move that resolution.
I move the resolution. It's Resolution B-1-15-3235. And is there a second?
Okay. So, Member Westholm has moved it, and Member Murnicki seconded it. And yeah, there's a lot more language there, but Mr. Pumper can go ahead and inform us. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, Superintendent Granseth, Steve Pumper with PMA Securities here. As the board probably was reminded back in December 16th, when you passed the resolution to set the sale for the bonds that you'll be voting on tonight, districts have very little control over when they receive their money, both from the state and from county taxes, which is where the district gets the majority of their funds. The district has a little bit more control over when they pay their bills, but not a lot of control over that as well. And sometimes, the timing just doesn't match up. And so, it's very common for districts throughout the state to need to enter into some terms of short-term borrowing. Duluth School District has done this in the past, and because the state was in its own financial crunch, it was really withholding a lot of state aids for every district in the state of Minnesota. And based on the district's financial health and how that all meshed up, we've had to issue some significant dollars in the past. And last year, as an example, it was $22 million for a full year. This year, it's really fun to be in front of the board and say things have definitely improved. And because the district's actually doing some even very, very minute work on when they're going to pay some of their bills, we were able to shorten or lessen that dollar amount to $4.4 million and for just over a three-month period of time. So, it's roughly from the end of February until June 1st is when the district is anticipated to need some short-term borrowing. So, in December, the December 16th meeting, the board approved a resolution approving the terms and calling for the sale of $4.4 million of aid anticipation certificates of indebtedness. And what that means is you are borrowing against future state aids. So, that's the collateral that you're using to issue the state aids for the purchaser. The resolution that you approved on December 16th called for the sale for today, January 20th. So, PMA Securities prepared all the official statements and worked with your bond counsel, Freiburger, Buchanan, Smith and Frederick, to prepare all the documents necessary to issue the sale. At 10 o'clock this morning, all bids were due and received, and we received two bids this morning. One from Oppenheimer and Company out of Philadelphia, and then the lowest bid out of Jeffries LLC out of New York City. The award was based on the lowest TIC, or the true interest cost, which factors in the total interest that will be paid, plus the cost, that's called the underwriter's discount, the fee that the purchaser charges in order to sell your bonds for you. The TIC that was offered by Jeffries, which will be the company that we will recommend you award the sale to, was .982 percent. The interest that the district will pay for these notes over the three-month period of time is $11,977.78. The yield, meaning a person who buys your certificates in the open market, they will actually receive a .45 percent. So, if you were an investor and you wanted to purchase something for yourself, which actually you could, you would get point, just under a half a percent of return on your investment in that three-month period of time. The certificates will close on February 23rd, so that's the day the district will receive the $4.4 million. And again, the maturity is June 1st of this year. So, again, just over a three-month period of time, you'll pay those dollars back. And we believe, PMA Financial also does the cash flow for the district, so we believe you'll have sufficient funds by June 1st in order to pay these certificates. And with that, you have a resolution to vote on.
Thank you, Mr. Pumper. Are there any questions, any discussion on this? Let's see. This one. Member Johnston.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Pumper. Good to see you here again. I think I missed you down in Minneapolis this time. Just if you could tell a little bit of background, was it .9 percent, did you say the interest rate was?
No, the true interest cost was .982 percent. The yield is .45 percent, so that really would be the interest.
Okay.
But .982 is really what the district's going to be paying.
Okay. And do you know, I don't know if it applies to these kind of bonds, is there bond ratings put on something like this? Is that entering, obviously such low interest rates, assuming it doesn't. But do you know anything about that that you could inform us?
I do. The district certainly has a choice when it issued these bonds to have them rated. Based on the shortness of them and the low expected interest rate, it would not have paid to get the rating. A rating on bonds like this will cost about $14,000. And so, you would, even though an interest rate would be lower if you have rated paper, it wouldn't have offset the increase of $14,000 of fee to have them rated.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that info. And again, sorry I missed you down in Minneapolis.
Okay, Member Welty.
Mr. Pumper, then the $11,000 figure is how much it will cost the school district with this financial arrangement to pay the interest for these?
$11,977, so almost $12,000.
Okay, okay. I like to round things, but I think I rounded that down a thousand. I would just make this observation for us to consider because we will be taking a look at some expenditures before the meeting is over with. And I would point out that while this is a very modest financial arrangement, it will not pinch us very much. We once had a policy that we adhered to with 10 percent reserve, and that was, among other things, to help prevent our having to be in need of short-term borrowing. And while this is a fairly small pittance for us to deal with, and it is a, suggests that a much better trend for us financially, I would probably hearken back to short-term borrowing when we come to it. But thank you very much, Mr. Pumper. I appreciate the information.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions? Oh, Member Harala.
Thank you very much for your presentation, Mr. Pumper. Did I hear you correctly earlier that this happens to many districts across the state, that they're having to do this?
Yes. About two years ago, it was over 50 percent of the districts in the state had to do it. It has been better over the last two-year period of time, when the state reversed its borrowing from districts, so to speak.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think looking at the, just statewide, that, and understanding that you have those connections, I think it's important for us as a board to remember that, too, that we really were harmed by the legislature holding back those funds. So, thank you very much and appreciate your presentation.
You're welcome.
Thank you for pointing that out, Member Harala. Member Johnston?
Oh, you piqued my interest. What percent of schools this year do you estimate are taking out short-term loans?
Mr. Johnston, I'd like to provide an answer. I honestly don't know. I haven't done the research on that. But I would, I could fair, make a fair statement and say it's less than 50 percent now.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Pumper. And I think what we can do is vote on that resolution then, which is B-1-15-3235, even though we're out of order. So, all those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, Member, thank you so much. Member Westholm, we'll have you go back to the business report.
Okay. And looking at what's on our list, it's always kind of lengthy, but financial reports, of course, approval of payment of claims, budget revisions, and that's on page 28, wire transfers, investment transactions, WOTM projections, fundraisers, none this month, a little unusual, I guess, and bids, RFPs and quotes reports. I don't think there's anything facing us now. Bids, RFPs, quotes, policies and regulations. We do have on policy, or number three, 3A, annual review of policy 8030, and that's school board member compensation. And I think we've had a very brief discussion whereby we're not going for, at least that's the, my, at least what I think I've heard, is that no one's looking for an increase in compensation. So, I'm not sure if we need to do anything with that one or not. B, new policy, 1098, gifts to employees and school board members attached to MSBA model policy. And that got some discussion this weekend, and it's always kind of a dicey one, but I think we've been pretty good with this. So, I don't believe there's any major changes in the policy that we've got, or are there?
I'm thinking we're looking at, since we had a discussion, maybe tabling this because there's a few things that we have to look at.
Okay. Do we have a motion to table?
So moved.
So, that'd be moved by Member Harala, motion to table, let's see, 3B.
Yep.
Policy. Is there a second? Member Westholm, you want a second?
Yeah.
Okay, Member Westholm will second that. Is there any discussion on tabling that? Member Harala, let's see. Go ahead.
So, this last weekend, there was the Minnesota School Board Association conference, and preceding that, we had a conversation about the gift law. And there's, in MSBA's model policy, there was a conversation about, or there was a line in there about gifts to teachers and students. And I think that warrants a little bit more discussion and a little bit looking into the state legislative guidelines. And so, hearing, there was some discrepancies in what MSBA had put forward. I moved to table because I think we need some more research into this, just to make sure that we're presenting something that's fair and that's in line with the legislative moves this last year.
Thank you, Member Harala. I appreciate that. I'm gonna, Member Welty, did you want to say something, too? No? Is there any other discussion on this? Member Johnston?
Sure. Could you tell the board a brief summary of what the discrepancies are?
Do you want to go, Member Harala, you want to talk about that? Go ahead.
I might need a little bit of help with this, but I'll be happy to look at that. So, you know, as a state employee, I, you know, so it's about the acceptance of gifts. And I know that oftentimes, teachers are given a small token of appreciation from their parents. And we're just not sure if the legislature mandated that teachers were included in that, and if parents were included in that. And we wanted to make, just wanted to make sure to the level that it went for people being able to receive gifts of appreciation, small tokens of appreciation. That being said, I think it's really great when nice notes are written to folks, but I just want to make sure that we're in line. What it says in our policy is that it includes teachers and students. I just, I'd like more information from the state. So, is that...
That's good. Member Harala, oh, Member Murnicki, you want to say something? Go ahead.
Again, I taught for 36 years, and we talked about this at the committee meeting. The Minnesota School Board Association has got, is going to look at this because what is the value of somebody bringing you a fruitcake? And I've gotten fruitcakes. And if you coach something, if the kids buy you a sweatshirt that, you know, says the Denfeld Robotics Team or the East Swim Team, whatever, these are issues that I think the School Board Association wants to look at. Again, we're not talking about graft and corruption. We're not talking about buying the coach a BMW or giving the third-grade teacher a set of golf clubs. But if, for example, on the day before Christmas break, holiday break, some students bring in some baked goods or other things, these are areas that the Minnesota School Board Association wants to look at and further define. It's important to reiterate that, you know, we're not looking to go against anything. It's just we need a better definition from School Board Association, and they also feel that they need a better definition.
Thank you, Member Murnicki. Member Welty?
I do now have something to say. Yeah, the idea of gifts to employees being something we'd need to write a policy about. I guess my thought is if the gift was significant enough, the IRS would be interested in it. And if the IRS isn't interested in it, I'm not sure that we should worry if a teacher gets, I'm going to date myself here, a CD player or something like that. When I looked at this, I focused in on school board members, and of course, that would be something that the state would weigh on. In fact, the legislature stepped in last year and lowered the amount that a school board member in Minnesota, for instance, could get, so that we were notified by an architectural company before we went to the Minnesota School Boards Association meeting in January, that they were going to have to give up the spread, the nice fine food that they enjoyed providing us because it fell afoul of the law. I'd be interested in hearing what the MSBA wants to do, but I think the critical thing here is the acceptance by elected officials of gifts, not our employees.
Thank you, Member Welty. Mr. Granseth, our Superintendent Granseth, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I, too, went to the MSBA session on their new policy and learned that they were very conservative in their definition of school district official, as you were saying, and went from school board members and superintendents and principals to all employees. And I think that will be a big part of the discussion to be had. I also wanted to note that currently, we have policy 1095, gifts to school personnel, which intersects with this new policy. And I think that there would be an opportunity to do some combination and have one policy rather than two. So, I think tabling it would be a wise idea.
Thank you, Superintendent. Member Johnston?
Sure. It reminded me, we had some good discussion on this at the committee. And I wanted to throw in some of my observations on being a federal employee for many years, contract administrator. Gifts were, there was, always one, one of the few ways you could lose your job as a federal employee was accepting gifts from anybody. And it was very strictly enforced. And I think, I think it has to be clarified on teachers, but I think in general. I was always somewhat appalled that MSBA would put on these wine and dine things put on by the engineering and architectural firms. I say that as a professional engineer, that I thought it was very, very much out of order. And I'm glad to see that... And I'm glad to see that the legislature finally noticed that there was something wrong with people wanting and dining on something that's supposed to be an educational thing for children. So, I was certainly very glad to get my notice from old engineering. I think it was long, long overdue. Questions on teacher, I think we have to be careful, too. You know, times change. Times have changed dramatically in education, and I think things like gifts, and I think have to be looked at as something that people are looking at. It'll certainly go along with what people want, but I would certainly encourage people to take a fairly strict interpretation. Giving an apple to the teacher, apple's not worth five dollars, but nonetheless, favoritism is, we know, prevalent, and it's something that we have to guard against. I think limiting gifts is a very important thing, including to teachers and other staff.
I just want to make one comment because I, when I read this about teachers especially, having been an elementary teacher previously and seeing at the end of the year, there are a lot of elementary kids that like to buy their teacher something at the end of the year. And, you know, it's not usually, you know, something really big, but it could be something like a ten-dollar gift card or a coffee mug or a lunch or something, just appreciation. And a lot of times, a little second grader or first grader is really proud to do something for their teacher at the end of the year. So, I think they were going too far with this, my personal opinion. And I think, you know, teachers, a lot of times, don't always get a lot of recognition. And it, I know it would make one of their students very happy to be able to provide something that they may be picked out to their teacher. So, I know we're gonna look at this, so I would like to see us table this. So, are there any more comments at all? Mr. Westholm, you just have your light on, or did you want to say something?
Well, I just have a couple of questions that I can ask our business department. Have we had any issues with this kind of thing in the past? I don't, I don't recall ever having an issue with when I was the principal and I was at Denfeld and Central, but I don't know if it's ever been an issue for us.
Oops. Go ahead, Bill.
Off the top of my head, I'm not aware of any of issues like this, but I know that, again, now with the published dollar amount being quite a, you know, a different situation from anything that we've had to address before. You know, I think the biggest question that I've seen, as I've visited with people, is the issue that you're focusing on. And as I read the statute and the definition of local official that's within the statute, this draft version that we have in front of you now from MSBA seems to go well beyond what, at least the words I read in the statute, but I'm only one person, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. I think we're gonna vote on tabling this. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. So, we'll look at this again and get a better handle combining with our other policy. Thank you. Okay, Mr. West, or Member Westholm, would you continue with the business report, please?
Yeah, I think I was at four, contracts, change orders and leases. We had very few things to consider this month. But 5A was acceptance of donations to Duluth Public Schools. Well, that's kind of along where we just discussed, but I don't know that we need to table this or discuss it. But in our discussion of the gift thing, this one might be good discussion material, too, because, you know, we do get donations, sometimes from businesses, and sometimes they're very well-meaning and very helpful, and they maybe go beyond what the state has defined as being acceptable gifts, but, yeah.
Okay, we'll have Superintendent.
Yeah, Superintendent Grandseth.
I just want to chime in on that, that the statute has an exception, that school districts can accept gifts, just individuals within that school district cannot.
So, you can get the BMW, then?
Well, the school district can. Perhaps.
Heaven for automotive department, huh? Okay, thank you, Superintendent.
Okay, and we went through the resolutions.
Member Westholm, can we just, let's, should we do the resolutions, each one, and then the remainder of the report after? So, let's go through the resolution 5A, if we could, please, if you would read that.
Okay, 5A, B-1-15-3232, acceptance of donations to Duluth Public Schools. It's recommended that Duluth Public Schools approve resolution B-1-15-3232. And so, we've got a recommendation to do that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second by Member Murneke. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor of resolution B-1-15-3232, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. Member Westholm, would you move on to the B?
Yeah, we've got B-1-15-3233 legislative platform, and of course, the legislature's in session now. So, attached, we have a draft of the legislation platform to be reviewed for possible use during the two thousand fifteen legislative session. And is this kind of almost our first chance to review this? And do we need to set aside this for our next? Go ahead, Mike.
Do you want to answer that?
Sure. There was discussion at the committee meeting about this. And if you have any inputs, we'd be glad to put that on here. Otherwise, we're, you're voting tonight to make this the platform.
Okay.
Thank you, Superintendent. Is there, did you want to read that, Member Westholm, or we can all read it?
Where are we?
Member Murneke?
This is our legislative platform, this point of order, and the legislature is meeting. And I don't think, Member Westholm has to read the platform. He can move the motion, and then we can have discussion on that if we want.
Good idea. Okay, Member Westholm?
Yeah, I will move the motion for the legislative platform.
Is there a second? Okay, seconded by Member Murneke. And we can have some discussion on this. Is there any discussion from members? Member Johnston?
Sure, we talked about this a little bit at the committee meeting. I think I'll probably suggest tabling this when I get done talking as I make a motion. I think legislative platform is important. And this is being fairly vague, nothing wrong with it, but it's fairly vague. And I think that particularly in light of this coming back from MSBA, you know, again, I got a list of all the platforms that MSBA is promoting. I think I've got ten of them when I was at their legislative session. And again, I don't, I can't go through, I'm not prepared yet to put all those out and up in a platform motion at this point. But I would really like to add some of the MSBA recommendations to that. Maybe I could find that real quick. I don't know if I can. Probably not. I'll hold it. But there was, there was about ten I wrote down in quite detail. So, I'd actually suggest, again, if one of, I guess I would actually suggest that we table this in light of adding some of the MSBA-specific platform to this. So, that's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion to table the legislative platform. Is there a second? Okay, there's no second. So, we don't want to table it right now, but we have two speakers that want to say something. Member Welty?
I haven't really had a chance to do a lot of thinking about this. This is another one of the victims of my flying in on Monday, since I couldn't attend the business committee meeting. I noticed the first one seems rather general. And I'm sure that these were all items that are worthy of trying to talk to our legislators about. I will say that I, I feel like I would be in a better position to have a sense for a platform, making recommendations for a platform, if I had been a part of the Minnesota School Board Association's Legislative Platform Committee. And somehow, I overlooked or missed the announcement of the meeting for that in November, they get together. And so, I will not be a part of that. When I was on the school board previously, I attended most of those. So, I would just make a request that in the future, if we get a notification of the MSBA getting together to discuss legislative issues, that maybe for some of us who are Luddites, we get a paper copy of that information so that I'll be better prepared next year to talk about the legislative platform.
I just have to ask, Member Welty, are you talking about the delegate assembly? Okay, and just to explain that, I'm on that. And actually, I was part of that whole discussion. And it's something that you're elected to from the surrounding school districts, just so. And it was for a couple of years, so that's why you probably weren't part of it. But we do receive information on that, and I just have to explain because I think that that legislative platform from the MSBA does carry quite a bit of weight to the legislature from all the school boards. It's a group of us over a hundred, so just want to mention that. Can I, oh, do you want to, hold on. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Salika Pankow. No, I remember how the system worked in the past, because as I said, every, every time that they got together, I would always go. Anybody who's on a school board can go to the initial meeting, and then they elect a small number of people, which you've obviously been elected to, to go to the legislative platform. They also made an announcement at the regional meeting during the MSBA that they were, they're having a hard time finding enough people to go to this. So, I'm sure that if I had managed to show up, they would have been happy enough to have me. So, I'm just hoping that in the future, I am notified when the MSBA is organizing its legislative appeals to the state legislature.
Yeah, and I can see that some districts are really short and others aren't. So, it just depends on where you live, so. Member Lefler Kemp?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of support the legislative platform and just remind folks in the discussions that we had at the committee meeting about this, that this is very similar to the general platform that we put together last year. We did ask that last year's platform be sent out, so I think everyone got that by email as well. And that what NSBA has on their platform is their platform, and we can always lobby on that or advocate on that as school board members. This is for our district. And then, just so the public knows, the NSBA Association does have much information on their website, and they invite school board members from around the state to participate in a number of advocacy opportunities on their website, as well as in some of the advocacy work they do during the legislative session. So, just getting back to this, this, again, is meant to be general, to allow us to advocate as things come up through the legislative session as well.
Okay, thank you. Member Johnston?
Mr., Member Welty reminded me of something that I think is kind of important. There is a lot of activity going on from MSBA when it comes to politics and the director meetings. And the information on the director meetings, I was told, comes to the superintendent. And I haven't been getting those for quite some time. I was a alternate director at one point. And I think, for example, in our District Eleven, which is kind of northeast Minnesota, there was a person running for the director or the, I forget the title, the head director for this district. We never received that information that had been sent out. They said again to all the superintendents.
Member Johnston, just want to mention, we're talking about the legislative platform. Just keep it generic or germane to this area.
Sure, I think legislative platform is very important. And I guess I'm asking, bringing up to the superintendent and/or the director from our, there, that we be included and information be sent out to members when it is received. So, we, as school board members, know what's going on on this stuff, as we have not been informed at this point. I would like to.
Number, or Mr., or Superintendent, go ahead, and if you want to answer that?
I just want to point out that I believe you all get the MSBA information mailed to your homes. And any emails that I get also go to you because it's sent on the same email. So, I don't send you an email that you've already received.
Thank you, Superintendent. Yeah, that's really true. Member Johnston, you have something else to say?
Apparently, it's not true. I'll find out who isn't sending what to who, because they told me that things are so sent to the superintendent, not to the board members. And there was a lot of stuff that I have not been receiving. So, I'm asking that not to happen. I do want to say, I did find a sheet that I put down, and I'd like to put a, read a couple of these, why, I think it's kind of important for us to look at some of these. One of the NSB priorities, there were ten, add additional three hundred dollars to general funding formula, flexibility to hire well-trained educators, there's a lack of teachers in greater Minnesota, adequate and equitable access to learning technology, we must be testing with computers, implement recommendations of the school's facilities work group, alternate facilities aid, support teachers evaluation and Q comp, remove roadblocks that prevent access to both secondary educational opportunities, student privacy and security in digital learning environments. And, for example, Gmail data mine, being data mined for advertisers, aligning student testing to align with careers and college-ready outcomes, support border-to-border internet access. And this is a really important one for our area, I think. Appoint a land director to deal with the school trust funds. They're asking board members to actually pass a resolution to support that, particularly the school trust fund. So, these are a lot of things that I think that we could have incorporated, some, certainly not all, but some of these are certainly good discussion items, like, for example, teacher evaluation, Q comp. There would certainly be lots of discussion on that. So, that's why I bring up, that's why I suggested that we would do, should do, I think, a little more comprehensive job on our legislative platform, because it can be very powerful, particularly if we combine with MSBA.
I see no other lights. Can we move on, resolution B-1-15-3233 dated January twentieth, twenty fifteen? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries unanimously. Okay, Member Westholm, I'm gonna have you continue with the other resolutions, please.
Okay, D is resolution B-1-15-3235. And we just discussed that.
Yeah, okay.
So, that one, we've approved already.
We did that one already, yeah.
So, we're done with that. And I think.
Go back to C, it's thirty-two thirty-four.
Oh, okay, okay. Resolution confirming remaining work scope of the district long-range facilities plan. And this one may generate some discussion, but, you know, I've been involved in a number of construction projects at the schools I've been at, and there's always, there's always remaining work to be done and things that you don't anticipate. And so, I think, given what I think, we've actually come in under budget, but we still have some things, obviously, to finish.
Member Westholm, can you move that, then?
Oh, yeah. So, I move. I'm talking too much. So, I move.
Resolution.
Resolution B-1-15. No, that's not it.
Yep, yep.
Is it?
Yeah, then thirty-two.
Thirty-two thirty-five?
Four.
Thirty-four, okay. Resolution confirming remaining work scope of the district long-range facilities plan. And that's on page forty-four in our book, too.
And so, we have it moved by Member Westholm. Is there a second? Seconded by Member Murneke. And is there any discussion on this, which I'm sure there is? Okay. Member Johnston?
Yes, I have a discussion. First, I'm gonna hand out to the board members a pack that I put, and some of my discussion will have to be, you'll have to listen to that, it's not totally self-apparent by looking at it. Mr. Welty, if you get this, if you could pass it on to Mr. LeBlanc and Mr. Hanson, I did make up copies for them as well. Thank you. First of all, I got a couple of questions on this from our handout and also from our discussions. One of the discussions was, the superintendent mentioned during the, during the discussion that this was a recommendation by, I probably have the name wrong, about a citizen panel. And I guess I was gonna ask the superintendent what that, who that panel is and what kind of discussions do they have, and what kind of a forum it is, and what kind of information are they given? are they given.
Let him finish that.
The community finance group is made up of professionals from a handful of businesses and organizations in town. We have gone over different topics, depending on the time of year it is. We've gone through budget considerations. We looked at the long-range facilities plan, the funds that were remaining, and asked for some general guidance in how to best use these funds. So that certainly wasn't the only consideration, but it, but it was a piece of it. And their recommendation was that, knowing how difficult it can be to get funding for projects, especially for school districts, that this money be used to complete the projects that hadn't been completed, and complete work that, that needed to be done on our buildings, and wasn't during the process. I'm going to ask Mr. Hanson if there's anything else I need to add to that.
Other than, the members of the group represent major businesses in town, in the healthcare industry, public accounting, retail, insurance, convention and entertainment, and banking. And so we're kind of, you know, able to get a balance of people from several different types of businesses to participate in the group. Thank you.
Okay, Member Johnston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I got a few questions here. Who's on that committee?
The members are Tracy Morris, Terry Scott, Mike Piero, Justin Black, Shelley Townsend, and Deanna Benson.
Thank you. I've got a couple of specific questions. One is probably from Mr. Leiter. And back to Lakewood, again, I asked about Lakewood, and again, too bad that we can't get natural gas piped up there, we have to use fuel oil. But I did look back on our records, and my records said that we, the 2.8 million that we spent back, and I believe 2012 was one of our first project, was for redoing the HVAC. And yet, you've got, part of this cost is HVAC boiler upgrade. So I thought that was done on the $2.8 million back in 2010. Could you explain why that's on there again?
Member Johnson and members of the board, Lakewood is a unique building for our district in that it is not served by our natural gas source, so it burns fuel oil. We, originally, when that building was built, there was an electric boiler as the backup, and then the primary boiler was a fuel oil burner. We did, in the process of the long-range facilities plan, replace the electric boiler with a high-efficient oil boiler. Our, our second boiler at that site is not as efficient. I have put this line item in there to have further evaluation relating to that boiler. It may end up upon the study in engineering that it wouldn't provide a payback that would be worth replacing. But I wanted to include it in this list, so we can consider that.
Thank you, Mr. Leiter. Mr. Johnson, you have something else?
Back on Ordine East, which is on page eight, we have, you mentioned this auditorium sound and lighting equipment, and that $400,000. Again, I looked that up, and that was included, of course, part of the long-range facility plan. There were several, looked like a couple of several items that were on those spreadsheets. And it seems like that's a fairly significant item, and do want to thank you for sending out the latest tabulation on our projects. Unfortunately, I didn't get that in time to be able to actually look at it in any detail. But it seems like that would have, was a fairly major item at the time, and it seems like that should have been included. So why would some, or why did you elect not to include that, basically $400,000 item as part of the original spending of that?
Member Johnson, members of the board, Member Johnson referred to a cost summary status report, which I'll refer to as part of the reason why that, that particular scope was deferred at that time. If we do look at Ordine East Middle School, our project budget for that building was $29,262,000. There was a point in time in that process where bids were coming in, and ultimately, that project pushed that line of original budget. And therefore, in looking at the work scope that was identified for that, for that building, some was deferred until we knew that we could complete the basic work scope of, of all the projects. In particular, that project was an alternative facilities project, could be funded with that. And so if, if ultimately, all of the other projects couldn't be completed, felt that we, that one was one of the earlier ones, that it should be deferred until we knew where we were on all the other projects. So you're correct, it was a significant line item, but that's also the reason why it was deferred until we knew where we were.
Thank you, Mr. Leiter. You have more?
Yeah, thanks. If the chair would allow me to, I know I've been talking a little bit long, I could defer to somebody else, but I would like to have assurance to go through that I could talk about the handout I had. Should I do that now?
I think we'll go on to some other people, and we can come back, because there might be some-
I just want to be assured that I do-
There might be some other things that come out that, as people are asking questions. So go ahead, Member Harla, you're next.
Yeah, Mr. Leiter, I appreciate the time that you took within this discussion. I know I asked a lot of questions, having been, having not been on the board at the time that we did this. And so it took a lot of time looking through this, and just, again, really appreciate the conversation we had at that committee meeting. And in talking with community members and looking, looking into the future and the funds that we have that are available, I think it's really important to remember that these are correctly, these are directly connected to work that needs to be finished on our schools, and a, in a long-term investment we've made. And the long-range, long-range facilities plan had to happen because of many years of pushing costs back and not having tough decisions on needing to invest early. And so I think that that's important. So I will be voting to utilize the funds we have for this specific purpose, just to make sure that the future funds for our students are held harmless for student instruction and student programming. So, thank you.
Thank you, Member Harla. Member Lefler Kemp.
Yes, I wanted to thank you too, Mr. Leiter, for the very lengthy discussion that we had at the December, or January 12 meeting. And I know I also, like many of us, had many questions for you, and appreciated you going and providing the written material ahead of time. And, you know, we went school by school, Congdon, Denfeldt East, Denfelden East, historical Central, Homecroft, Lakewood, Laura MacArthur, Lester Park, Lowell, Myers Wilkins, Ordine, Stowe. We went building by building and had the opportunity to ask you lots of questions. And I appreciated the newspaper doing the follow-up story and really laying that out as well. So I did hear from a lot of community members that also said, finish these projects, finish these projects, support finishing these projects. So I will be supporting this resolution. And again, I appreciate the questions that we were able to ask and the information you provided last week, and feel very confident that we need to move forward to finish these projects. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Member Murdicki.
Thank you. Mr. Leiter, I want to thank you also. You sat through our meeting last week, and a number of us had a number of questions. I think all the board members participated in asking questions on this. And there's some, a number of billings we have. And as you went through, you explained, well, we weren't sure if we were going to have enough money for this, so we looked at what we could pull. And one example would be Ordine East. And again, I taught in that building for 36 years. I was there when they moved, I'm that old, that we moved the theater upstairs and called it the Little Theater. And if anybody wants a tour, I'll be glad to take them to the Little Theater. And I'm going to show you the shortcomings in this building. It's, it's, it's got a bad sound system, it's got a bad lighting system, it's got a bad, bad seating arrangement. It's a, it's a, it's a tough sell, and we pretty much left that as is, if I'm not mistaken. There wasn't much money put into that theater. And this is just one example of all of the buildings, from Stowe all the way out to Lakewood. You know, we can, we can go from Denfeld to East to Lincoln to Ordine and find things that we'd like to have on this list, but, you know, we've got to make sure we have the money. And that's what this was. This was, it was budgeted for, and then they said, well, you know, let's hold back on this a little bit, make sure we have enough money to finish all of these, and then we can, we can maybe add the sound system here, for example. So this is just a pat on the back for all the work you did on these buildings. And we, we know that right now, there's a few things on a punch list that we'd like to get done, and I think that the students need those, and I'm hoping we can provide these for the kids. Thanks.
Thank you, Member Murdicki. Member Welty.
Yes, I think Member Harla pounded the nail right on the head. She, she talked about holding students harmless in the process of deciding how to dispense with some $5 million that we've been told is, is left over from the long-range facilities plan. But I would point out that we've made an awful lot of decisions that have cut back the number of teachers we have, have increased class sizes. The RED Plan was originally contemplated, it cost us $257 million. We ended up spending $60 million more than that. And now we're talking about finishing up the tag-ins of a project which ballooned by $60 million as, as we added things to it, which makes me wonder just how necessary these final projects are when we are not seeing the kind of savings that were originally projected. Originally, it was projected that we would have $5.3 million in savings. I did pull out the state auditor's report. Of course, we were not allowed to make the kind of inquiries that I hoped we would when the state auditor's people were here. But I would point out that in this schedule of theirs, it's page five, if you ever want to go back and take a look at it, they note that we've had about $21 million of, $21.8 million of spending that was supposed to be based upon savings, and yet the only savings that they could come up with was just shy of $13 million, leading to the number in parentheses down here, meaning a deficit of $8.8 million, that we've had to finance, we've had to finance, we basically had to pull that out of the general fund to, to pay off for the RED Plan. I don't believe we're saving $5.3 million a year. I consider it's much less than that. The state auditor's found that we're, we're spending money that's not savings, and it's means we've been having to pull about $6 million a year out of the general fund. We've just had to borrow $4 million for three months to, to pay ongoing expenses because of something the state did to us. I, I really need to be persuaded that these supposed tag-in projects are all that critical when I'm sure we're going to end up spending maybe close to $2 million of money that could go to the classrooms to, to finish these programs off. And I just, in good conscience, cannot spend this money when, when it's going to take more money out of our, our general fund and money away from classes.
Mr. Hanson, do you want to say anything about that, about where the money, or Mr. Leiter, either one?
The, these monies would be restricted from being moved to the general fund. The option that could be considered would be potentially some consideration to the debt service fund, but not to the general fund.
Thank you. Let's see. Member Johnston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me go back to my handout. What Mr. Welty was talking about is on page eight of my handout. Page number one is just the adopted budget. I'm going to walk everybody through this. Page number two is, member, page number two of our adopted budget, that I have circled and relevant things, which is transfers, $6,346,806. That is what this school district defines, and as Mr. Hanson said, and as what Mr. Leiter said, are the general fund savings. Go on to page three. Where did this come from? Mr. Welty is right to go back and looking at. Page three of my handout is from the 2007 review and comment page. That tabulated an estimated $5,315,350. Keep track of these numbers, they all come up again. Page four is from the review and comment 2010. Page 50, which is a tabulation of all the numbers that were going into the plan at that time, which is only partially the debt services. There were four at this point, or six, we now have eight. Column A, which I've listed as column A, which is second to the right, how was that found? It was taking that $5,315,350 and adding 3% per year. That number totals at the bottom $122,000. The last column is what might have been available for general fund use after these lease payments. Column B is found by subtracting from column A, the two Y, the two, 2009 B and the 2010 D is right to the left. That's how, the original review and comment, Johnson Controls, calculated all these savings. Now we go to the next page, page five. Now, the first column that I've got is that I put down, which I think is actually what's really going on. Back in 2007, we came up to $5,315,350 as savings at the time. I went through that, and the reason I'm doing this is that this money that we're spending, as, as defined by Mr. Leiter and Mr. Hanson, $1.9 million is coming from general fund savings. And these, I'm trying to explain to you why the general fund savings are not there, and why we, as a school district, can't afford this thing. Instead, we have to keep it in the classrooms, not out of the classrooms. How did I come up with what I think we had erroneous numbers back in 2007? First is a utilities reduction plan. For those that don't have it, Mr. Leiter sent those out. The utilities for this year, or 2014, actually, was the second highest in nine years. And I have taken that utilities reduction out. We have not had any utility savings at all since the plan started, so obvious. Will we, maybe in the future, maybe? If we sell, if we, if we get rid of the four buildings, we may have some. At this point, we do not have any savings. Food services, everybody remembers, we changed the RED Plan to put full service of cafeterias in every school. That eliminated the $243,000 in food savings. The principal, assistant principals, some people may argue with this, and no, these are things that I would like to have for discussions, these are just my estimates. And I would certainly like to have some well-thought-out critiques of what I do. But where did I, why did I eliminate that? The reason I did is I went to the MDE expenditures. I compared in 2009, the start of the RED Plan, we had, according to that, which is reported by the district, on administrative costs, we had $7.000. which is reported by the district, on administrative costs, we had $7.8 million. But yet, in 2013, the last year available, we had $8.9 million in administrative costs. We upped administrative costs by over $1 million since the start of the RED Plan. So, I have eliminated that savings on principals, and that's probably a little bit of, that probably isn't all principals. There may be some other staff in that, too. But I thought, since the MDE is, according to, we reported to them, we had an increase in administrative costs of $1 million, I thought it was at least fair to take out a savings of $800,000. I left everything else the same on that sheet. I did reduce the savings that was predicted for PER media and music specialists. I reduced that from $400,000 to $200,000. We have realized that we have to increase teachers, and so I've reduced that by $200,000. With those five items, only five items, taking out of that and correcting that savings, which was only predicted by Johnson Controls in 2007, I've lowered the actual savings. My, my prediction is, my estimate is, is that the actual savings per year back in 2007 is only $2,889,662. That's important because that is how all the general fund savings have been predicted by Johnson Controls, and that we have been using verbatim in our numbers. I go back, and my next page is six, which is I put together. Remember, Welty has asked for an amortization schedule for about a year. This is the amortization schedule for all of our debt service bonds, and they seem to be quite accurate. Column A, and again, you'll see on that, is identical to the previous column A that was put out from the design and review and comment back in 2010. It was identical. And there's also is a tabulation of all, all the debt services to the left of that, all our eight debt services. This is a spreadsheet, and all the numbers add up. And that's good, nothing wrong with any of that. Column B is again identical to the review and comment, which, which indicated the claim dollars that would be available after we paid off all the three or four service debts from the general fund, incidentally. And that number, that column, is identical to the review and comment page 2000, from 2010, except for the second number, I put a star at it. That was changed because the review and comment from 2010 was not accurate. The actual amortization changed that number up to $1,130,000. It's a minor number, but if people look at my numbers closer, which I hope you do, you may notice there's one discrepancy on those charts. Number C is the numbers that I use to figure out what is the actual predicted general fund savings. That, again, is based on, that circle number, $2,886,662 that I estimated, predicted to be more accurate than the $5 million that Member Welty was questioning. Again, you go into that number very simple, use the same methodology, add 3% compound interest, and you get the exact same number, except it may be more reasonable. That bottom number is now $60 million maybe savings instead of $122. But the important column is column D, because remember, we are paying for, by our resolutions that we passed, 2009 B, 2010 D, and 2012 B, out of what we call Capital Fund 05, that money is transferred from the general fund back to page two of our budget, that $6,346,000. That is the exact number which is transferred always to, from the general fund, so we did this year, to Capital Fund 05. So if we look at that number, suddenly we do not have the money that they said that we had. We don't have $6 million in savings. In fact, in 2015, the savings that we have is only $98,000. Remember, we're going to add another one point, we're proposing to add another $1.9 million. So, I apologize for the complexity in this, but when we're talking about $1.9 million, I think it's important to try to understand and go back, where did the general fund savings come from, and was that estimate made back in 2007 accurate? My contention, looking at this, with the data that I've given you, I think it is beyond a doubt that that number is not accurate. So we are set, and I would certainly welcome any discussion on this. My last two pages is, in fact, the report that Member Welty mentioned from the auditor. They pretty much agree with my numbers. They came up with, the general fund savings, they call it general fund transfers, are actually $8,865,531 short. That was only four years. We had a year before, then we've had two years since then. So the numbers have gotten much worse. So in summary, what I'm proposing to this group is that this isn't just finishing up the Long Range Facility Plan. This is pulling another $1.9 million from the general fund, as we just seen on the budget, page two, the $6,346,000. We've already done that. And I think that, well, this is an opportunity now for us to not pull that money out of the general fund, keep it, do not transfer from '01 to '05 like we have been doing for the last six years, but instead, keep this money into that and do what people want us to do, lower class sizes by hiring more teachers, reducing, working on the achievement gap, working, working on our racial disparity, looking at the east-west gap that we have, getting classes in Denfeld that we'd need. And, and I think by going forward with this, I don't have any problem necessarily with adding these projects, except the money is coming out of the general fund. That is something this board should be guarding against very strongly. We should not be pulling money out of the general fund. At most, we should be reducing this $5.5 million by $1.9 million and taking the money that we don't have to be literally robbing from the general fund, robbing from the classrooms, and taking it to finish our buildings. These, finish these buildings, according to, to Mr. Leiter's things. Now, I don't have any problem with his suggestion, but I think we, as a board, have to look at, is it better to have, to finish off things which were low-priority projects, or is it better to deal with the, continue to deal with very effectively with the achievement gap, racial disparity, east-west disparity? I think that we have to reconsider this. I apologize to the board that I did not have time to do this. We got this information when we, we came to the business committee meeting. We were not given time to look at this. And I apologize for the complications of it there. I wasn't the one that came up with this funding originally. But I'm asking the board here that I think we should really reconsider and look at, do we have savings before we literally pull general fund savings out? Do we have those? Are they really there? Are they identifiable more than just on paper? My contention is that we are being too hasty if we go through and pass this without looking at this again.
I think we need to hear from Mr. Leiter on this. I know that there is something where we cannot combine capital and operations, but I know you want to speak on this, Mr. Leiter. So go ahead.
If I could, Chair Slayapunko, members of the board, a couple of things I would say in response to Member Johnston's comments. First of all, I want to make sure that there is clarity in that the remaining funds that we've identified are 5.3 million. That does not have any correlation to the $5.3 million in general fund savings, which were identified as Member Johnston has pointed to and as he's provided you in a handout. I would also agree with him that that calculation of general fund savings was intended to provide for a transfer that would be used to pay off the debt on a series of obligations that were called general fund savings. However, the $1.9 million, I, I want to just make some reference to that, because Member, or, excuse me, Mr. Hanson indicated that, that there's a couple of these categories where it could be transferred to debt service. And if $1.9 million was transferred to debt service, what that would mean is that the work that's identified under that category of spending would not be completed. And a big piece of that, over $800,000, is in this building. And so, what we're talking about is that the remaining work that was identified originally in the scope for this building, $800-some thousand relating to closed-circuit television, access control, some additional categories of work that we cannot use alternative facilities dollars. So, we would not have the opportunity to, to make a future levy relating to that work, to find the funding. And if that debt service was created with that remaining balance, it, it would reduce one year's levy, or one year's payment for the debt relating to that long-term debt. And for the next 18 years, we would continue to be without those improvements that this building would be completed. And that's a, a good example of some of the other categories. And I just looked at the buildings where we have some general fund savings projects identified. Denfeld, $55,000, for example. A big part of that is expanding the closed-circuit television capacity to keep recorded data for longer. And you'll see that throughout a number of buildings in the list that I provide you. So that would not be accomplished. And again, we would not have that for the next 10 years in order to reduce the debt for one year by not spending that $1.9 million. So that's just a brief example, and I wanted to make that clarification and...
Thank you, Mr. Leiter. And Mr. Hanson, do you want to add something to that?
Yeah, I just, Member Johnston and Member Welty both referenced the state auditor's report on page eight of Member Johnston's handout. We've talked about this a number of times over the last few years. The deficit of 8.8 million that they're looking at is recognized within our financial statements. It is the balance roughly from, at the end of last year, within what we refer to as the designated account. The way we got in that situation was continuing to make transfers to buy down the debt service levy and, and the debt service payments, transferring those monies to the debt service fund that were anticipated to come in from building sales but have not yet. And we know that we have purchase agreements in process for both Central High School and Nettleton, and those will go a long ways towards moving that issue in the right direction. But that's, that's what's being talked about there. In regards to, you know, I haven't had time to go over this in, in a lot of detail. You know, I, I'm just thoroughly convinced that we are saving utilities at Woodland Middle School, because we're not heating that building anymore, and neither is anybody else, for that matter. But, and, and food service, we have, again, fewer operations at, fewer, we're operating out of fewer kitchens, and there are savings that go along with that as a result. Likewise, for the buildings that have been closed, there are no principals or assistant principals at those buildings. Now, in some cases, as a result of budget discussions, we have added back positions and principals within their, within their own decisions within their buildings have sometimes looked to add as either assistant principals, or deans of students, or other support people like that. And so there are some of those examples as well. But, I don't know, just a few comments relative to some of the, some of the comments and statements that have been made.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. I'm going to go with Member Welty.
Yes, in the, in the time that I've been on the school board, I have, I have had an awful lot of parents talk to me about personnel, people, and, and filling out our, our classrooms. On the human level, I've heard very few people talk about anything having to do with facilities. I think most people are, are tired of that. I would like to, first of all, a question, because I might have some suggestions about how we would proceed, because I do think we have some questions here that need to be answered, perhaps have not been thought through, and perhaps can be, can be ironed out and dealt with. How quickly does, Mr. Leiter, how quickly do we need to adopt this resolution for you to proceed with these, these $5 million worth of projects?
Mr. Hanson, or, or Mr. Leiter, okay.
Just so that I'm sure, Member Welty, your question is, could there be opportunity to delay the action on this resolution? What impact would it have on the ability to complete this work? I think there's a, there's a goal to, to complete this work and spend the remaining money, or make the decision fairly soon. We have financial institutions that have been involved in these, in the financing for these issuances, and they are certainly anxious for us to close out these accounts, or the spending one way or the other, so that, so that that's finalized. We're very late in the winter right now to finish design work, bid, and ultimately have this work ready to begin when school's out. So it's very critical for me, from that standpoint, to do this now. And I, I guess I would have to apologize for bringing it at this month. You know, if we, we would have been a couple months earlier, perhaps that would have freed up that time. But it's really taken the, this time and the, the opportunity to make the presentation when I did last week. So, I hope that answers your question.
Okay. Member Harla?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Mr. Leiter about his comments about historical Central. I've had quite a few folks in the community ask about the front of the building and why everything is crumbling down. I've, I've had many, actually, many people ask about that, including some business owners from across the street. And so I was glad to know that they're rectifying the, when they didn't fix the roof, many, when they fixed the roof in the 80s, was it, Mr. Leiter? They went over the front of the drainage, and so water just goes straight onto that front grassy knoll, and actually, grassy clay knoll, which pushes everything forward. So I'm glad to see that we're making some structural changes to make sure that, that is, I mean, it is, it's a part of our logo, it's a part of, a, a big piece of history. I'm glad to know that that area will be fixed as a, as a community, as a, you know, gathering space for our community, but also to know that for the school that we have downstairs, in our area learning center, that they'll have the same type of amenities with a closed-circuit TV, and cabling upgrades, and just the ability to be able to walk in to school safely through some of the sidewalk paving repairs, and the number of staff that we have working in this building. I'm glad that we're able to invest in some of those significant repairs for this building. That was not a focus earlier on, to make sure that other facilities were highlighted. So, thank you very much for that overview.
Okay, Member Johnston?
Appreciate the discussion here so far. Couple clarifications. The utility bills are what the utility bills are. We are, again, I'll repeat, last year, we were the second highest of out of nine years. Again, you're going to wonder, well, yeah, we shut Woodland Hills. But say, for example, if you want to look at the Piedmont electrical bill, it was three times higher what it used to be. The Lester Park electric bill is three times higher what it used to be. And, you know, the fact of the matter is, they were predicting $800,000 per year savings, and we have had virtually none. Yeah, when some winters are colder, some are warmer. But when we're the second highest out of nine years, it shows that we clearly don't have $800,000. Maybe will we in the future? I hope so, when we sell these other four buildings. It's going to drop down a little, but remember, those four buildings were all closed at that last energy audit, which was end of fiscal year 2014. And we still have very high energy bills, and since they've already been shuttered, they're not going to, probably the energy bills are, certainly, they're never going to get anywhere near $800,000. near 800,000 dollars. Uh, the, the, uh, food service...
Hold on, hold on a second.
Sure.
Um, Member Harla, you had, you had some, a point of order, or?
Point of information.
Oh. Just a, um, just a, a point... Hold on a second, Member Johnston. Go ahead, Member Harla.
Pointing information to Mr. Leiter and to Mr. Hanson. Um, can you, I, I'm guessing that some of those utility costs were tied to higher gas prices and higher utility prices, just in general. I know the house that I hate has been pretty expensive over the last many years, and I've heard from many community members, so, um, understanding that some of the savings are there, but overall prices would also tie to that, correct? I just would like some more information on that. Thank you for yielding the floor.
Thank you. Um, Member, or, Mr. Hanson, you wanna just address that, please?
Uh, yes, certainly, prices were high last season, um, and in addition, degree days, I, I can't, uh, pull those numbers, uh, out of my memory at this point, but, um, we had kind of the, uh, unfortunate situation of both high price and cold winter, um, working against us last year, so that was certainly significant.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Member Johnston, you wanna say something else?
Sure, yeah, I'll finish up. Uh, uh, last winter, natural gas prices were quite low. They had dropped down. Two years ago, they were high, not last year. We've had record-low gas prices. Uh, but it doesn't matter what the gas price is, point of the matter, point is that we didn't save 800,000 dollars, doesn't matter why we didn't save it, we didn't save it. And, uh, so consequently, the savings that were predicted back in 2007 are not valid. Uh, and that is one area they're not valid. The food service, uh, I did notice that we've had an increase of, uh, personnel in food service, and I'm not against it, don't get me wrong here, I'm not against having full-service kitchens. All I wanna point out is that we've got full-service kitchen, we have more people hired in food service that are under our union contract, and that's good. But what it, what it means is that we don't have the savings. All I'm com, talking about here is I'm asking the board to look at, not whether or not we should've had full kitchens or not, we got full kitchens, we got good food, and that's great. But, the, the alternative, or the, 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 the result of that is that we do not have the savings that were predicted in 2007 based on very sketchy data back then. From 2007 to now, that's what, uh, nine years. We actually have real numbers now that we can actually look at what are our real savings, not, not paper savings that were done by Johnson Controls or somebody else. I don't care if Johnson Controls did it, or somebody else. We have to monitor and evaluate where we are at, that's a major part of leads, for example, and the basic monitoring evaluation would show that the savings that were predicted on paper back in 2007 have not come true now. And, uh, that is, and therefore, we have to look at, when we pull money out of the general fund, like the, uh, 6, uh, million, 346,806 dollars that we have in our budget this year, uh, we have to look at what the impact is, because that is not backed up, not verifiable by the savings that were predicted nine years ago. And I'm just asking us as a board, we have to look at that. Now, do we wanna finish some of these other projects? We can go back to the public and ask, let's raise some more taxes, or raise taxes. We do that, that's not unheard of, is something that I may even advocate for, if we want, if these projects are important. But what I don't want us to do is take money out of the general fund, as we clearly have been doing, and putting that to billing another 1.9 million dollars in facilities that should not be coming out of the general fund. I want that money in the general fund that we get to go for our education, to work at racial equity, achievement gap, um, east-west gap, everything that we've got. That's critical, that's what everybody tells us they want us to do. We have an opportunity now, uh, to do that. If these are low-priority projects, let's think about it. Uh, Mr. Leiter, thanks, I'd appreciate getting some more breakdowns on which projects or have to be used, if it's alt facilities, if it's, uh, for the, uh, the COPs. I'd like to know that before I make some of these. And just to remind you, this is a significant thing that we've done. Uh, so far, we paid with 2009B, 2010D, 2012B, and for four years, we paid on 2009A, all from the general fund, on bottom of page six, 27,559,426 dollars that we, that has been paid for these debts, uh, from the general fund by resolution of this board. And, I'm not saying that's necessarily bad, I think it wasn't a good idea, I'm saying that we shouldn't pull out 1.9 million dollars again. We've paid enough out of the general fund, and now it's time to keep that money into the general fund and deal with the issues that we have to deal with in our classrooms to make our schools the best in Duluth, because we do have competition. To that, uh, end, I'm gonna make a motion that we table this item and have more discussion on the committee meetings in next, uh, uh, meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, um, to table this, and a second, by Member Welty. Um, just one thing I wanna point out, um, I know Mr. Hanson probably wants to answer some of this, but a lot of these questions have been asked and answered multiple times.
Number of times.
I, you know, I, I've been around for, it's my eighth year, um, plus I've been around as PTA president and a teacher, and, of course, these are all projects that need to be done for over 30 years. And I saw a lot of savings, especially the first few years, they were coming, once we were getting buildings done and consolidating buildings, I just have to say this, we had many savings. I, I, I bet this year, we're probably gonna have a lot of savings, because we're having a mild winter. Last winter was a ton of snow and multiple days below zero, um, probably one of the worst winters we've had. Um, so maybe last year, we didn't have as many savings, but I know, I saw many energy savings, and like Mr. Hanson said, um, we don't have Woodland. You know, that building was, um...
Madam Chair?
Okay, yes.
Point of order.
Oh, go ahead, Member Murneke.
We have a motion to table.
Yes.
Let's, let's...
Okay, let's go on with that. Sorry, I just hadn't said anything.
Yeah.
Um, okay, let's vote on that.
No, no, they're gonna...
Oh, um, I don't wanna have anyone, please, we will not be wrapping on the, um, table. Okay, so we have a motion to table and a second discussion. So, Member Murneke, did you wanna start the discussion? Did you wanna say something?
No, we're gonna, yeah, make our motion, we can start. We're gonna have a long discussion about tabling this.
Okay, whoops. Uh, Member Welty?
Uh, if possible, have a, a long discussion, I don't think we need one. I think we've, we've uncovered some interesting points that we need to, to talk about. Uh, I pointed out that we, as a school board, had no difficulty, uh, raising the cost of the red plan by 60 million dollars, but apparently, we are locked into the, uh, the, the last details, and, and there is some resistance to not spending every last cent on details that weren't that important. Now, I will point out that, uh, some of the items that, that Mr. mentioned, that Mr. Leiter mentioned, sound very, very compelling, the ITV, things of an educational quality, and I would have no difficulty, uh, applying some of these monies for...
Is this a point of order, is this about tabling, Member Welty? Is this directing regarding tabling or not?
We're voting on the tabling.
Go ahead, Member Welty.
Yes, there is, this, this, this will be my point then. Uh, there's an awful lot of stuff that we have not talked about, we've raised some important questions, I'd like to have them answered, even if we refuse to table this, I certainly would like to know what the savings are. Member Johnston has raised some interesting points, um, and I think that, uh, that a discussion about these items is worthwhile, whether we proceed with this tonight or not, and I certainly will look for confirmation of Mr. Johnston's, uh, comments and math, uh, one way or another. But I, I do think that we should, uh, should have that discussion before we pass this, but otherwise, I would still like to have the discussion, even if we do pass it.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Member Westhome?
Yeah, I, I, I think we've gotten way off base on, on, on this, and it's interesting, but, um, what we're originally considering is finishing up approval for the remaining, uh, funding for the remaining work that needs to be done, and, and I think that's all we had with this. Uh, and, and again, the resolution under D, B1, I think we did approve this, uh, 3235 relating to 4.4 million taxable general obligation bonds, and, you know, we approved that, I believe, did we not?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we approved that. So, we do have a lot of discussion going on, but I'm not sure we're gonna settle all of this tonight, then we could be here till 2:00 in the morning and still, still would be going around and around with this stuff, so, um, I, I, I think we've kinda done what we're supposed to have done in, in C, so, I'd leave it at that.
Okay, so we have a motion to table, and, um, and, Mr., Member Johnston, you wanted to say something still about tabling?
Yes.
Oops.
I think Member Westhome was correct, uh, we have a lot to talk about, I don't really wanna talk about it all night either, that's why it's so important to table, so we can have a thorough discussion. These discussions have not been talked about, contrary to what the member stated earlier. These are discussions that should be done, these are discussions, the question is what we, the question is education or buildings? And if we want to go into more billings, we should go back to our taxpayers and say, "We want another 1.9 million dollars to finish these billings." The other money is already there, sitting in there to be spent in the CLPs, but not the general fund savings. And I'm asking to table this, so we can have a thorough discussion.
Okay, we're gonna vote on tabling this. All those in favor of tabling, let's see, what is the resolution? Um, B1153234, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That fails, I think, 2-5.
Three.
Three? 3-5? 3-4? Okay, with Member Welty, Johnston, and Murneke?
No.
No. Westhome? You voted to table it, too. Okay, so that fails 3-4. Okay, we're gonna go back to the original resolution, B1153234, um, we're gonna vote on that resolution now, to finish the long-range facilities plan. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
Okay, that carries 5-2, with Members Johnston and, um, Welty voting against that. Okay, and, let's see, Member Westhome, let's finish the rest of the business report, please.
Yeah, excuse me, um, yeah, we're on number six, I guess, now. Informational, uh, these, again, items are provided for informational purposes, and no action is required, and that's expenditure contracts, and the superintendent during the, or the director of business and finance has signed the following contracts during the month of December 2014, and there's several contracts. Um, revenue contracts, there's none, other contracts, there's none, facilities management and control project status report, I don't know, Carrie, if you have anything more to add, or are you, no, okay? And so we're done with that, and quarterly grants and donations, I, I don't remember if we even had, do we, did we have any grants and donations?
It's just a, a review, kind of.
Yeah, okay. And so that's the business community, or the business, uh, report, and so...
Okay. Thank you. Member Westhome, so you're gonna move the business...
I moved the, the, um, the reports.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Lefler Kim. Any discussion? Let's see, um, Member Johnston?
I'd like to pull 1F.
1F?
Yes.
Okay, any other items? Any members? Member Westhome, you don't have something to call, do you? You just put your light on.
Wait for me.
I'll take your light off.
Okay.
Okay, 1F, Member Johnston?
Sure. I am here to probably talk about the Waddam report again, and, uh, I wanna, again, thank, uh, Mr. Hanson for broaching the subject, so I wasn't have to, we're gonna be accused of talking about Waddams, again. But it is a, it's all, I'm not the only one concerned about it, I'm really glad to hear that. Uh, we are, again, at the lowest Waddam, Waddam number we've ever had, I'm using, so do enrollments, 8465. Uh, we lost 80 students in one month, uh, so far this, we've lost 128 this year. If the last few years have been any example, typically from January to, uh, June, we lose about 100 more students, that's what's happened every year, since I've been keeping track. So that means we're in line to lose another 200 students this year. That's, uh, of course, bad news. I did wanna make one correction, the speaker, Ms. Strongbren, said that we lost 1,700 students, that was about 1.9 million dollars. Uh, the actual number is 19 million dollars, you missed a decimal point there. Uh, 19 million dollars is, uh, significant. And of course, uh, 200 students, that's 2 million dollars a year, though. Every time we lose 200 students, we lose 2 million dollars at 10,000 dollars, our actual total amount from the state and the feds is about, uh, 12,000 dollars, not counting building, uh, funds. Uh, so, again, 200 students is 2 million dollars per year that we are losing. Uh, I do have to bring up the thing, and I'm gonna bring it up because it's important as a board, that when we look at our enrollment numbers, we all seen, unfortunately, that Edison is planning to build a new high school. Currently, Edison has about 20% of the K-8 students that go to public schools go at Edison. We get 80%. Uh, I suspect that they will also get, uh, 20% of the 912, uh, schools, they're predicting that, as well. Their prediction fits in exactly with 20% of the student-age kids in Duluth. Uh, that's about 500 students. So as Member Welty earlier mentioned, we're likely gonna be below 8,000, and that's very painful. You know, 500 students, that's, uh, a lot. And that's year after year, 5 million, 6 million dollars a year after year. And I'm bringing that up, it's just that I'm very concerned about that, and we certainly have to watch the Waddam numbers, and hopefully, we won't be hitting, being hit anymore for another couple of years, but, uh, it's a concern. Uh, we've, again, as Ms. Strongbren said, we lost 1,700 students since 2010, um, and we're still going down, and we can't afford to go down, and we, and it's gonna be tough, and we got tough competition.
Superintendent, you wanted to address that?
Um, I, I just wanted to point out that although you're correct, we have about 80% of our market that Edison doesn't necessarily have the other 20%, because there is St. Michael, St. James, Holy Rosary, the Christian Academy, homeschool, online schools, and all of those entities together represent the other 20%.
Thank you, Superintendent. Uh, Member Murneke?
I'm concerned about the numbers. Concern should lead to action. Um, so I spent some time, I did some research. Duluth census dropped from a high of 107,000 to 86,000 today. It's a drop of 31,000 people, and most of those people are younger. Our birth rate for the last number of years is near zero, present day, our birth rate, it's no, near zero, you can look that one up. Two age groups that have increased in Duluth, ages 40 to 59, US census, they're not having as many children, 40 to 59. The other age group that's increased in Duluth, 80 to 99, they also are not having as many children as they used to have. The number of school-aged children in living in Duluth has declined. The number of school-aged children living in Duluth has declined. So, part of the reason for declining enrollment is Duluth doesn't have as many students. We used to have four high schools, Central, Denfeld, East, Morgan Park. Morgan Park, where our superintendent came from, had its own high school. In 1964, they had about 200 seniors, Morgan Park. Today, we have two high schools. Duluth had six, what we call junior high schools, Morgan Park, West, Lincoln, Washington, Woodland, and Ordene, six. Today, we have two, Lincoln, and Ordene East. Our student population was declining long, long before the red plan was started. Follows a pattern in the majority of Minnesota school districts, declining enrollment. Where Mr. Westhome's daughter taught, Lakeville, it used to be a small, little farm town, small high school, Lakeville. Lakeville grew so large that it ended up having two high schools. So where you saw Morgan Park at one time had 200 seniors, and now they don't have a school, you see some of the excerpts growing. Another interesting fact, the Minnesota... Another interesting fact, the Minnesota, state of Minnesota has lost so much population that we may see a loss of a representative now. Each state gets a certain number of representatives based on population. Minnesota, since 1903, has had eight representatives. Because our population is declining, in the Rust Belt, it's declining, pretty certain we're gonna go down to seven reps, and that's gonna hurt Minnesota. But we do see a population decrease. Other changes over the many years that we've seen to decline, and again, I'm talking about over the many years, private schools, Marshall, Montessori, the Catholic schools, and Lakeview Christian Academy, which I don't think existed 10 years ago, I'm pretty sure it didn't. I have to find out when that started. Charter schools. Edison is, this is not an anti-Edison thing, but Edison has been given a lot from the state to get started up. They get a lot of money, state funding, they get a lot of money in transportation, it costs Duluth School District a lot of money to support the charter schools, and the Duluth School District, as Mr. Johnston put it, has lost hundreds of students to Edison before the red plan existed. I was there, I was teaching, when a superintendent was welcoming students into Kenwood Edison, and it was on television. And as every student walked by, I said, oh, there's state aid, there's state aid, there's state aid. Long before the red plan existed, Edison came in, and it did take a number of students from us. Charter schools have, along with, I forgot, Harbor City International, charter schools certainly have eaten into our school population. Another growing phenomenon in our systems right now, in our school districts nationwide, online and homeschooling. You go down to the state school board convention, and there's a homeschooling workshop, and there are people who make a lot of money, a lot of money, selling learning programs for homeschooling. And if you charted from 1970 to 2015, you charted the number of people starting, having their own open school, or, I'm sorry, having their own homeschooling, you would see a precipitous rise, a number of people, long before the red plan existed. So, online and homeschooling is a trend that's growing, not only in Duluth, but growing The last thing is open enrollment, and again, Mr. Johnston mentioned this, and it is something that is good, and it's not so good. We have a number of people who live west of Stowe, and they choose to go to Renshaw. That was a problem, I can name a superintendent 20 years ago who was angry at a principal out at Stowe because we had kids going to Renshaw instead of going to Stowe, and it was, I always thought it was more, it's closer, more convenient than anything. Where Mr. Westholm comes from up in Piedmont, his kids went to Piedmont. Piedmont was losing students, Mr. Westholm will tell you that. Piedmont was losing students left and right. We lost a lot of students to Proctor, we lost students to Hermantown, to private schools. Piedmont now has turned around. Piedmont is actually bringing more students in, that's a fact, we're glad to see that. So we've lost students to Renshaw, Hermantown, Proctor, Two Harbors. I see the trend reversing. I'm concerned about our enrollment growths, certainly I am, but I'm also an optimist, and for that, I get blamed. Boy, if you're an optimist, boy, you're in trouble. I think a glass is more half-full than half-empty, and I'm thinking that we're going to return in a corner, the schools are built, people are settling down, they know where their kids are gonna go to school, and I'm hoping for the best. Am I concerned about the numbers? Certainly. But we can sit and beat this thing for meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting, or we can actually come up and say, hey, I've got some suggestions. Not just say I'm concerned about some, but I've got some suggestions. And I'm gonna finish with saying again, I love this school district, I love the schools I went to, Lincoln and Denfeld, and I think that we are turning around, I think we're doing a better job, and I think you're gonna see our enrollment increase.
Thank you, Member Murneke, for well-chosen words. Member Westholm.
Yeah, a couple of comments, following up on what Member Murneke was saying. We actually have increased our kindergarten in the past few years, and we saw that coming. So, for example, I believe HK is, is that Head Start kindergarten?
Handicap.
Handicap kindergarten? Yeah, so those kids are part of the program too. So, right now, we've got almost 680 kids involved in kindergarten in our district, and some of those kids have IEPs where they need an aide all the time, but that's fine, that's what we do. And grades one through three, or 1,973, dividing that by three, comes out to about 650-some. So, I see the numbers going up, and I think I mentioned in another meeting that I used to pay really strict attention to those numbers, and even down to kindergarten, because I wanted to know what was gonna be potentially coming at the high school. And we could see this bump coming, and, you know, it is a bump, I don't know whether you call it another mini baby boom, or what you call it, but there is a bump coming. And so, we have seen some increases, and I think will continue. What we have to do, of course, now, is sell our programs. I mean, we're in a, we're in a sales-oriented business now, education is not what it used to be. And so, we have to sell what we do, and I think some of our staff are getting out there and doing that, but here's what we do, and here's why we think your children will benefit from it, and, boy, I'll tell you, nothing sits better with parents than doing that kind of stuff. A little bit of PR goes a long, long way, so, and I think we're working at that, but we need to work at it, probably even more. So that's, I'm done.
Okay, Member Johnston, you have something else to add?
Yeah, just a couple of clarifications. The 80-20 split is only for the public schools, it wasn't including Marshall, Catholic schools, Christian Academy, if you add that, the number is probably about 25-75. So I was only talking about the public schools. The last three censuses that we've had, Duluth population has been at 86,000, it hasn't changed for three censuses, three censuses. Also, if you look at those censuses, whatever the plural is of census, what is it?
Sensi.
Sensi, pardon me, I want to give the students who are any bad habits. The population from 5 to 18 in the last 25 years has not changed either. The population of students in Minnesota is showing a slow increase right now. We have a lot of immigrants coming in, particularly to the cities, and so we are showing an increase. Students overall in Minnesota are not decreasing. Again, I'm not saying this to be a bad person, as some people seem to be insinuating, I'm saying that we have to look at this and try to have suggestions. We had this discussion, I think, on the May committee meeting, and I gave out some suggestions at that point. I think that we have to continue having suggestions, and I'm willing to do that. But we also have to look at the reality that we have here, and because we have lost our percentage of share of the students in Duluth, it is going down, and that, to me, is not acceptable.
Okay, we are going to vote on the remainder of the business report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, that passes 6-1, with Member Johnston voting against. And we have one more, we have a special resolution that we need to do, Member Murneke, because of information that we found out from our Duluth Superior Community Foundation, that has to be done.
I apologize for this, I am a member of the Duluth Superior Community Foundation, I work on the Duluth Public Schools Fund, and I just got an email, they haven't had a change in membership for about nine years, and now they had a couple of retirements, and I got a note from Melissa Peoples, said that tonight, and I apologize for this, and I, you guys don't want to do this, that's fine, we have to approve two members who have volunteered to be on this committee, so I'm gonna ask your indulgence, I'm gonna make a motion that the Duluth School District approve the appointment of Carol Hubert, a wonderful teacher, and Joan Ludella, a wonderful teacher, as nominees for the Duluth Public Schools Fund. I need a second.
Okay, okay, and that's been seconded by Member Harala, and I thank you for this, yes, Member Murneke, just because it is something that came about, that we have to have oversight over, or we have to vote members on, so let's have discussion. Is there any discussion on this? Member Welty, were you gonna do something?
This is for...
Wait.
This is for the Duluth Public Schools Fund.
Go ahead.
For the Duluth Public Schools Fund.
I think you were part of that at one time.
Yes, yes, no, I would have to vote yes for this, that's all I'll say.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Member Johnston?
Yeah, I'll vote yes for this, but it wasn't part of the agenda.
No, I know, we need to, do we need to vote to put it on the agenda then unanimously?
Yeah, it has to be unanimous.
I think we probably do.
Which I'm willing to, I'm willing to vote for.
Okay, let's vote on putting this...
Should've been done before the meeting, but I'm willing to...
Let's vote on putting this on the agenda?
Just a point of order in this...
Okay, Member Murneke.
As I was driving down here, I got this message from Melissa Peoples, as I was on my way, and I apologize, I should've put it on the agenda, I thought I could just do it on the end, but...
Okay, so let's vote to put it on the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? That does, no? Okay, that carries unanimously, okay, let's vote on the actual motion. Am I doing this right, Melinda? Okay, let's vote on the resolution adding the two members on to the committee.
And they meet tomorrow.
They meet, okay. All those in favor of that special resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
Well, I just want to say one thing, because, ugh, it's getting late, because I did want members that went to MSBA to say something, but I'm kind of feeling like this is going really late, and our poor students have to go to school.
You have a motion to adjourn.
So, can I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, I have a motion to adjourn. Seconded by Member Welty, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's unanimous, we're done.